Okay, this is Chairman Mike McCoo calling to order the special meeting of the Board of Finance of the town at 6:05 PM on June 27, 2022. First order of business would be, hang on, changing screens, I think it's seating of alternates. Yes, so let's see who we've got here. I think we have everybody, right? Yes.
Got everybody.
Okay, so we'll move on to present to speak. Public participation is desired and encouraged. Speakers will time and appropriateness of comments to maintain progress, stay on topic and make quorum. Is there anyone here who is present to speak? If you are unmute about your name or turn camera and wave your hand. Okay, let's move on to end of fiscal year transfers to cover salary bonus, etc., for town employees. Board of Finance members have the information that was sent out. There were Board of Finance questions that were sent in to Erica and Donna. We got some answers back and I'm gonna see if I can maneuver my screen here. And get it. I'll open it for discussion at the moment while I'm getting the screen. I'll get a screen share going with the email. Anybody?
Mike, did you say you're opening the discussion already?
Yeah, I just wanted to get some discussion going while I was trying to do a screen. Because this would be in multiple motions, so it's hard to, it would be hard to make a motion and then start the discussion because there are multiple motions, so I thought we could just start discussion on the topic instead of the motion.
Okay, I have one thing if I may.
Yes, you may.
I, this just came to me, and so I apologize to Erica for not giving her a chance to respond. But I believe a number of these items are reverting the raised 2.2% back from beginning of the contract as if at the union contract, but these are non-union people, so it's not covered under the contract to back pay them. Should that be an issue for us? Did that make sense? Did I, did I?
Mike, are you, may I speak?
Yes, please go ahead, Erica.
So all of, with the exception of one separate bonus to the current Public Works Director, the rest are not bonuses, they're all, it was one retro pay that was done going back to July 1. Our typical process is for non-union staff to follow the same as union, and the Board of Selectmen actually had a motion to grant them a 2% increase as well. So the Board of Selectmen took action to do a 2.2% increase back to July 1 on all those non-union pays.
That, that was my question, is if it had gone through the Board of Selectmen. The retro.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I apologize that I don't have the date for you. It was shortly after the meeting following the actual signing of the contracts, so probably the first Monday in May.
Yep, that was my question is like, oh, that had passed through the Board of Finance.
Thank you, Erica. So as we look at the sheet that's on the screen, that what you said applies to items 1 through 8. Those are all just back adjustments for that 2.2, and then 9 is a little bit different.
Um, well, no, so they're all regarding the same thing. The Public Works Director salary, it needed two things. One, the 2.2% going back to July 1, and then a bonus that was approved by the Board of Selectmen. You don't see all of it needed because Troy was not here for a two-week period, so that actual two-week period is about the same number as that bonus that we gave. And that just, we, Donna and I recognized that math came up about the same afterwards, so we don't need all of the retro pay and all of the bonus. He doesn't get the same kind of upgrades that the other Public Works staff members get, so theirs isn't as flat as other salaries because they work quite a bit of overtime with weather-related situations.
Right, and so that's why something like the crew leader or the equipment operator are high because those people have, those people have other factors in their calculation like overtime and stuff like that. So the 2.2 applies to a larger number of hours and all that.
That is correct.
Okay, Christina?
So that's what was, I assumed that that's what was going on, but those numbers are the ones that threw me off because I thought there was an overtime line item or that you could use the snow budget for some of that overtime stuff because that wouldn't come out of this line item in the first place.
We used that for snow, not, not everything. So there could have been upgrades during the course of the regular year where the crew leader or the equipment operator worked as the crew leader or a laborer as a driver, drivers and equipment. So they have those upgrades when they're doing those other positions, and so that could have taken place outside of the snow overtime budget. So I think the snow overtime budget only takes care of the overtime during snow. Those other upgrades are in the regular salary line items, not just the, not in the snow overtime. That's just for overtime for snow-related functions. So if they came into, on a Saturday or a night, they were called back in because the tree was down and they had to cut down a tree, that didn't go into that line item.
Okay. The part-time laborer, I mean, that's just a huge.
It is because we had, prior to this, and what we had budgeted for was a laborer slash technician, and then that position wasn't filled, he was actually filled with a laborer. So there was one light item that was, we didn't take money out of. We used the laborer part-time, or I think that's what it was. So I have to defer to Donna on that one. But it's all, we didn't, you, we didn't have a laborer technician in last fiscal year. He, he was, took the position as a driver, and then the new position was filled with a laborer. So that shouldn't all be to part-time, but I can't say exactly what the number is, but all of it is just the 2.2% increase over the July 1 to April 26. Or into May, I apologize. Because the retro checks weren't actually done until mid-May, closer to the beginning of June, and that's when these numbers go back to there. And that, at that point, they began getting their new pay raise, pay rates.
So are you saying that the labor part-time $10,000, that that is not just the 2.2? Or it is just the 2.2?
I think in Public Works, nothing is just, it is just the 2.2, but the 2.2 off of not just a base salary. Right, so if it's, if it's the assessor, it's the 2.2 off of just their salary. This encompasses other upgrades and/or overtimes. But I can't tell you why that one, I don't know why that one is exactly 10,000.
Right.
Donna could.
2% raise on a $50,000 salary is only a thousand bucks, so.
I think they put, because we didn't have a laborer full-time, I think she used the part-time line item for that full-time laborer because we only had a laborer technician line item and a laborer part-time because our other laborer works part-time at transfer station and part-time at Public Works. So I think that, I apologize, that's why that number is big. It's composed of multiple staff members.
I was just gonna ask if that was over multiple employees to that job class as multiple.
So in our new budget, we've broken out the full-time laborer into its own line item, and we're no longer using the labor technician. We had hoped to fill the labor technician, but we did not. So this is two people.
Okay, and so getting back to sort of the original question, Erica, this basically with what you clarified about the director having some money left in the account is sort of a match for the bonus, that basically what you're telling us is all of these transfers are essentially squaring up the, what is required for the bargaining agreement.
That is correct.
Okay.
And typically, Mike, I know, I think somebody asked in your questions before and at your last meeting, we did have a placeholder in health insurance anticipating, but what Donna did was instead of taking one lump sum from that account and breaking it up, she trued up all of the salary line items because some of them didn't match with the people who were in them last year. So now they do, and the budget we put forth next year was based on those new, that the accurate accounting of the people that are in those positions when we had.
And $23,000 went to Wellington One for the overrun on their budget in this fiscal year also, and that came from, Donna told us that came from insurance.
Yes, because she knew she was able to, she was making these adjustments, so she had another. Plus, we had some additional funds there with just census.
A placeholder, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
What was that sum that came after the fire department overage?
It was $23,000, I think it all came, I believe it all came from that one online item, employee insurance. I can't remember now, but there was, there was only one or two motions that covered the entire thing.
Thank you.
And we asked Donna that question that night, since we're taking all this from this placeholder, do you, will you still have money to true up all these other things for the end of the year? She said, yes, I've looked over the whole picture and I have the funds available by pulling out these bits and pieces which we're now looking at. All right, more board discussion?
All right, so I'm still under the impression that the 2.2% union raises for this coming fiscal year, not last fiscal year.
It's a, it was, and it was retro back to July 1 of 2021, which was when the contract was effective, even though it didn't get settled till recently.
Okay, so this current fiscal year ends June 30th, so it's only from July 1 to now, so it only was this fiscal year. The next fiscal year is 2.75.
So Erica, when we were doing regular budget season, you were talking about, you know, we had that 5% number, you couldn't make a commitment because it wasn't signed. And basically what we were saying then was this is, this encompasses the year going forward and the year behind, but it wasn't really retro pay, right? It was just that the person had to jump 2-point something and 2-point something.
Correct, because they, there was.
The retro year.
Yeah, so next, so what we budgeted for next year will be the, all these numbers that are moved over there, current 2.2% salary plus the 2.75, because we knew what those numbers were. We were, we had done the negotiation part, we were just waiting to get the thing signed. And so we were able to use numbers, I just couldn't tell you what those numbers were. So moving forward next year, you shouldn't anticipate any change in, in, in those numbers. So the 5%, in some cases, it was a different amount, because we were also, we'd also cleaned up the salaries. For instance, the town clerk was a much larger jump because the number that had been used before was for the previous staff member, and the current staff member didn't match. So we trued all those numbers up when we went before Board of Finance this year with our budget.
Right.
So every time I said, I couldn't tell you what it was made up of, it was made up of 2.2% and 2.75%.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Well, so starting Friday, they'll, they'll also, they'll get an increase in pay to 2.75.
That's correct.
And have all these adjustments for the year been made already?
They, they were paid out. It's only been a couple of weeks, I want to say. First pay period in June, second pay period in June. Everyone received one, a separate payroll check that was that 2.2 going back to July 1.
Okay, I'm gonna get us start, oh, go ahead, Christina.
Oh, I'm just looking at the, the Public Works Director one, just one more time. So is that, that bonus number, the, the 1,903, that's not a 2.2% off of his base? Is, does that include this other bonus you got? Or?
It might be a combination. So Donna took a look at what was budgeted there and how much she needed total to get to the 2.2 plus the bonus that the Board of Selectmen had agreed to, and this is the number she needs to move into his account to be able to have all that paid out.
Okay.
But there was still a balance of money in there because he was, he was not here for two weeks.
So there's, in just very rough numbers, there might be, say, 1,450 of retro and another 450 towards the bonus.
Ish. Ish, the bonus was 2,600 and some change. And I don't know what the retro was.
Okay.
But these are all of the amounts needed in each salary line item to pay out, except for the Public Works Director, the 2.2% increase over the fiscal year.
Okay, other board member questions? Make sure I have to scroll because I'm doing screen share here. Anybody else? Shall we, Christine?
I just want to point out, because I know there was confusion talking about these transfers and then the bonuses that are happening in, on the ARPA side of things, which are two different things. It's not the, it's not the same. Though they've received this back pay wage adjustment, if you want to call it that, now, and now we're talking about an additional bonus at ARPA.
Right.
Coming out of a separate pot of money completely. Just so everybody understands.
There's nothing in these numbers accounted for any of that.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, I'm gonna get started, see how we go. I'm gonna start right at the top with number one. I move that we transfer $655 from 0134 Assessor to 0126 Election Officials. Got a second, any discussion on the motion? So, what, go ahead.
Well, I just, I just wanted to, I know Erica already explained it, but this also doesn't include, I know the Selectmen have been talking about a bonus for the registers, registrars and the, that that would have to come through a whole other, not ARPA and not this, but it's not included in this. Okay.
Great, it is not, and I will tell you, the board already approved that bonus contingent on an ARPA approval, so that everyone gets it or everyone doesn't for the treasurer and the two registrars. But Donna, nor Donna or I felt confident that they would all be done at the same time before we would need to be done with the fiscal year, so we opted not to ask for a transfer into these as part of today's transfers.
Okay.
So if we need it, we will come to you separately if need be.
Okay, great.
Okay, any more discussion on this motion? Seeing anybody waving hands, okay, Samantha, call the vote.
Christina?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Next, I move that we transfer $17,056 from 0132 Treasurer to 0130 Accounting Services. All right, discussion on this one. So this is a large number, is this all for one person, Erica, do you know?
Um, yes, this is for the new Assistant Business Manager position. So most of the money came from the treasurer. If you recall, we decreased the salary of the treasurer and increased to the business manager that didn't exist. So this is taking the money from the treasurer's line and moving it over to the accounting line item.
Okay, so this is more than the 2.2%. This is also picking up the rest of the salary account.
That is correct.
$17,000 would be.
That is true.
Really big.
Yes, and I will tell you that that position actually did not get a 2.2% increase because it did not exist on July 1.
Oh, there you go.
So it's, it's chewing up that line item.
Okay. Any other discussion on this motion? Samantha, let's vote.
Christina?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. I move that we transfer $2,940 from 0134 Assessor to 0130 Accounting Services. Any discussion on the motion? All right, let's vote.
Christina?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. I move that we transfer 011, I'm sorry, I move that we transfer $23 from 0111 Selectmen to 0135 Board of Assessment Appeals. Sorry. Okay, discussion?
Do they have that much in there?
$23?
We'll make an assumption. Touch and go.
All right, let's vote.
Christina?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes. Motion carries. I move that we transfer $1,797 from 34 Assessor to 0137 Revenue Collector. You have a second, any discussion? Let's vote.
Well, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
So this is another one, is this for two people or one person? Because that can't be one person's.
This is one person, and she may be shoring this up to, I can't, I can't be certain, but I know besides just the 2.2 contractually, there were some other increases that were negotiated when she was hired based on certified municipal collector status, and that all has happened since within this fiscal year or it was finalized, she was just named, so some of that may account for those dollars, but she, I know Donna budgeted for that, so I can't tell you exactly, but it all goes to contractual dollars, there's nothing outside that.
So, so, so just a comment, I think it would, I mean, I, I believe it. I just think it would be helpful for us to understand if we saw what everyone's base was, what the 2% was, and that what some of these extras are, and that, because, that's why we're confused, basically, is that the numbers don't totally make sense on their own like this, so.
I mean, I know we budgeted, Donna, I had budgeted within anticipation of that coursework being done when we put a budget through last year. So in her shoring up the dollar amounts, I believe that's all it should be, but I can't speak to Donna's math for sure.
Okay.
Are you questioning it, Christina, because of the raise that was put into the budget for fiscal year 23?
This has nothing to do with that.
Yeah, no, it just stands out as like, as an odd amount. That couldn't possibly just be a 2 point, the 2% increase, that's all. And the other ones, it's just hard to tell. And it, I guess in the future, it would be great to just see the detail because then we wouldn't be confused. That's all.
A second, what Christina says.
Any more discussion on this one? All right, let's vote.
Christina?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes. Motion carries. I move that we transfer $898 from 011 Selectmen, sorry, 0111 Selectmen to 071 Planning and Zoning. Discussion on the motion.
Is this, who is this for?
Planning and Zoning Secretary.
Okay, is that for the person who assists during the meetings? Or is that a?
It's a position.
Yeah, that would be Recording Secretary, you're thinking of Stephanie. This is the person who actually works in the building, taking in like permits and fees and answering the phone and all that, that, at the, in the Planning, Zoning and Land Use Office. Any other questions?
Well, I know our zoning agent is not an actual employee, so that comes out of a separate line item, but would he also fall under that, that category and you wouldn't need, we don't need to backfill somewhere there?
No, he, it's a contractual expense, so we contract that service, so it's not subject to the 2.2%.
Okay.
And then the Assistant Zoning Agent, there's enough of a census change that they're savings in the, in that line item to cover the increase.
Okay.
Any other questions? Discussion on the motion? Let's vote.
Christina?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jeff? Mike?
Yes, motion carries. I move to transfer $57 from 0111 Selectmen to 0172 Zoning Board of Appeals. Discussion on the motion.
Do we have the $57?
We're gonna make an assumption that Donna's math is correct, this is what we pay her for.
Thank you.
We're not in a position to check the math right now. Any other discussion on the motion? Let's vote.
Christina?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jeff? Mike?
Yes. Motion passes. I move that we transfer $551 from 134 to 0231 Fire Marshal. Any discussion on the motion? All right, let's vote.
Christina?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes, motion passes. I move that we transfer $22,695 from 0111 Selectmen to 0311 Public Works.
Second.
Second, thank you, discussion? Second, thank you, discussion? All right, let's vote.
Christina?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes. Motion.
Okay, last one, I move that we transfer $2,817 from 0111 Selectmen to 0004 Fund Transfer Out.
Second.
Just for clarity, as you can see on the screen, since it's called Fund Transfer Out, a little granularity below says this is animal control salary and human, this is director salary, and as I understand it from Donna, it's named in this fashion, because that's how the money moves, so we don't necessarily name right to their department, we named a fund transfer out, and then that goes from there to their departments.
That, that's making me wonder now, too, the Human Services Director salary, that's there's, there's more in that than that, or is that multiple people?
Well, it says director, go ahead Erica.
It should just be director, but both of them got a 2.2%. I don't know, let me grab my budget, I don't know if they both have.
Wasn't there a raise for the Human Services Director sometime during the year or something?
No, that's next year.
Next year.
Let me see if they share a line item.
I mean, just the rule of thumb, if, if a salary is 50,000 or 2% bonus is 1,000, so this is like more than double what that should be. I mean, I mean not, well, I don't even know what it is, but if it was 100,000, which I know it's not, then it would be 2,000, and this is still more than that.
Right, if I'm not mistaken, the salary was around 45,000.
Yeah.
The salary is 46,803?
It should have about 1,100.
I can't speak to, again, Donna's math on that one, because there shouldn't, it's been the same person.
So Erica, maybe you could just clarify that the Board of Selectmen has not voted to change that salary at all in this?
We have not, no, and even if it was, even if it's made up over the two, the assistant salary is the shy of 6,000. So I can get some clarification from Donna on what it is, and then we can certainly report back to you. I have no intention of us paying anything more than we should, but there's nothing other than the 2.2% pay in this area.
You know it is.
And it's a salary position, so it's not as though there's overtime connected to that.
When we kind of learned some of the answers to the questions that we had at the speaking without Donna being here, like for instance, yeah, can we sort of tweak the descriptor a little bit and say, you know, show whether it's a plural number of employees, because like, we still have a laborer part-time, so it doesn't sound like a part-time person, it sounds like, we've decided it's two people.
Right, but for this fiscal year, that's where it was actually paid out of, so next year there'll be a new line item, but this year there was not.
So that's the.
During the year.
Which is. Okay.
But I will get an answer from Donna tomorrow, Mike, and shoot you an email so that your board can see what that is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any more discussion on the motion? Let's vote.
Christina?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes. Carries. Hang on, I gotta figure out where I parked my agenda.
Now that I did the screen share, I can't figure out where I left anything. That was our last regular item anyway. Does someone have the agenda in front of them? I think we're back to present to speak, right?
Yeah, correspondence, but yeah, then we got president.
Yes, so correspondence, yes, you all have everything so far. So present to speak. Anybody out there who would like to speak? Okay. Good and Welfare, I just want to thank everyone, particularly the board members who have made all these adjustments for these various special meetings.
Mike, I think Peter wanted to talk.
No, no, I, I want to adjourn, I'm waiting for him to finish with this.
He's, he's pulling at the leash. I just wanted, I just wanted to say, you know, this is where I hope we're doing learning things that we may find ways to prevent the need for some of these meetings as we go forward. Maybe we can tune up our process better, maybe we can come up with a procedure that questions in advance, so we don't have to do this. Maybe not, so I just want to encourage people to continue to think about how we can improve our process, and I want to thank everyone again, and even the couple of people from the public who came along to see what's going on tonight. The participation is always low, I'd love to see more of it, so I appreciate the people who come.
Yeah, I think that's kind of, it's good to have it in a regular, a regular, you know, meeting rather than a special.
Yeah.
I, I just want to say that from the, what we discussed at the last regular meeting when this first came up, that I, I still didn't feel like, you know, that the response we got was focused on the motions themselves and, and the way the money was accounted for in the different apartment, different departments, a little bit, but we still were minus the sort of transparency of understanding the figures, and even still tonight. So I, I just would urge us, it doesn't, I'm, I'm not asking for more detail in the motions themselves, I'm asking for the underpinning of, that's what I tried to ask for last, last time, the underpinning of the math that supports that detail, what, what goes where and to whom, because it's just, if we don't understand it, we can't imagine the public's gonna get it. And there are a lot of pay matters being discussed of one kind or another, whether it's a bonus or, you know, trueing up or whatever, there's this.
Or raises.
A lot of stuff lying out there, and I personally am having trouble keeping it in order in my mind, so I gotta think other people are having it as much, or more trouble.
All right, anything else for Good and Welfare? Pete?
Move to adjourn.
I second that, all those who are in favor, please wave.
Bye.
Bye.
Good night, everyone, thank you.